I call to order this work session of the Gladstone City Council for Tuesday, April 25th. It's 5:30 PM. Tammy, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Huckabee, present. Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riekel.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington.
Present.
Mayor Melch.
Present. Please stand for the flag salute.
They've moved it on us.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent that in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are on the agenda for the meeting. The public is welcome to attend the work session in person or online. However, no public comment will be allowed, which is our practice at work sessions. We have two items on the agenda tonight. An overview of the North Clackamas Water Commission and a review of City of Gladstone City Council rules. We've had a lot of good information coming to us with a lot of new councilors. I feel like we're still in this training period, so we're very appreciative of staff providing this kind of information. And also, one of the things we learned during this training period is that we are up here as policymakers, but there are others in the city who really do a lot of the behind-the-scenes work. And I want to call on Counselor Huckabee to make a brief statement at the beginning.
Thank you. So this week is Administrative Professionals Week and tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day. All too commonly administrative staff are forgotten in the back and we tend to forget that ships will sink without them. So I just wanted to give a brief thank you. I'm only going to use first names just out of respect to Haley, Susan, Mary, Jackie, please help me with this, Luvia.
Uh, Yuvia.
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 Thank you.
Yuvia.
Kristy, Kathy, Deanna, Kristen, and Katie. I hope that you will be celebrated tomorrow.
And a big thank you to all of your hard work. Also, city administrator pets.
Thank you. That was very kind. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Huckabee. All right, the first item on our agenda is an overview of the North Clackamas Water Commission. Staff, would you like to introduce this?
I will introduce to you thee Wade Hawthorne, who is going to come and give you, we're calling these educational sessions and I would be remiss if I said I erred on the agenda. There is a county missing in the title. It is the North Clackamas County Water Commission that Wade is going to provide you information on the services and how those pertain to Gladstone.
Mr. Hawthorne.
Yes. Okay, there you go.
And they will stay on.
Okay, very good. Well, welcome, mayor and councilman, councilpersons, I'm sorry, right? It's an honor to be in front of you tonight to talk about my job, right? Which is pretty easy for me to go on about. So it's been a while, I think, since we've ever had anybody come over to the city of Gladstone and present about the commission. This is really your source of water. This is where you get all your municipal drinking water from, right now, okay? And I'm going to give you a little story about the commission, some history, and give you some details about how we operate and kind of what's going on in present day with the commission. Then let you ask as many questions as you'd like, all right, as part of that process. So let's get started. In the first slide, I guess I control that, right? So I push forward and here we go. So if you can see that, the question is, so who am I or who is the commission? And what is, what is this all about? Well, it's pretty simple. You see the picture, it's a treatment plant. That's what this is. The North Clackamas County Water Commission is a treatment plant, all right? Okay, it has several other assets, but it's, it's a sole-purpose entity. That's what we do, right? Produce drinking water from the Clackamas River and serve it to its member agencies. And we'll get into who those member agents are essentially and how this all works. But you see pictures of it in the foreground. You may have seen it hidden back behind the trees in the fence line if you've ever driven up South Clackamas River Drive over on the Oregon City side. And how you would get there is if you were headed up towards Home Depot and got lost and headed up to Oregon City, up Forsyth Road back there, right? You went past Forsyth and kept going for some reason, because nobody goes back there, right? Unless you're trying to get around traffic, right? Unless you're headed to the backside of Oregon City to sneak around the backside of the hill. You would pass this plant as you're over on the south side of the river, essentially, all right? So this plant happens to reside on the same side of the river as South Fork Water Board does. We'll come back and show you why that's important as part of this process, okay? So I'm going to give you a little history of the commission and how it got around to being who it is and how you got to be associated with it, okay? So. But first, let's talk a little bit about the organizational structure of the entity itself. Formed under a 190 intergovernmental agreement between the parties, essentially. It's governed by a five-member board, which you appoint representatives from each of the member agencies. Those member agencies are Oak Lodge Water Services. I would say district, but they're now called the Authority, right? So they're Oak Lodge Water Services Authority, they're quite proud of that, by the way, right? Along with the Sunrise Water Authority and the City of Gladstone. Those are the three members essentially of the present-day commission, all right? The commission is essentially operated with four time, four full-time treatment plant operators. So it only has four staff. The rest of the people that operate, if you will, or administer the commission are essentially borrowed or contracted by the other member agencies. So myself, I'm a part-time general manager. I'm contracted through my regular job, which I am also the general manager of the Sunrise Water Authority, okay? And so I also serve as the general manager of the commission on a part-time basis, all right? The reason is, we only have four, we only have four employees, right? So it doesn't need a lot of overhead, right? The whole goal is to try to get all, we use all the resources and funding that we have towards the purpose, which is the plant, right? And so we try to make it as efficient as we can. So we contract our services for finance, engineering, and administrative support from those member agencies. Both Oak Lodge and Sunrise provide supporting services for the commission. The commission isn't required necessarily to follow all the public rules that you would have to follow as a 190, but we go ahead and do it anyway, okay? So we're subject to public meeting law, local budget law, all the procurement rules. We follow all the rules that you do, okay? And each of its member agents are held to all the ethical standards and all the other provisions that are associated with operating a public entity as part of that process, right? The one thing that's really different about that board, it's not elected, right? It's appointed by you elected officials. You get a seat at the table because of its organizational structure. So Oak Lodge and Sunrise each get two seats and the City of Gladstone gets one, okay? Just making up that five-member board. Several years ago, that board was seven members and it moved down to five to be more efficient and make decision-making more effective in terms of its operations, essentially, all right? Okay, so it's a pretty lean organization and we take great pride in that, all right? So let's talk a little bit more about what the commission actually does. But before that, let's talk a little about our history, about how the commission was formed, because it's relevant, and how you got to be a member of it. So back a long time ago, right? And this is really before 1998, right? Gladstone was receiving most of all of its water from Clackamas River Water. It's a different party, essentially, right? So there's connections with the City of Gladstone, which some of you may be familiar with. Some of those remnant pieces of that are described in your recent water master plan that you have on file and you soon can go back and find some of that infrastructure. And many years ago, and I have it grayed out, the City of Gladstone used to have its own source of water, right? Down on the Clackamas River through something known as its rainy well system, all right? That has since been abandoned and no longer exists. Then you went to Clackamas River Water to get your water. And the reason you lost the rainy well, it's a long story, but essentially the federal rules forced you out of it, okay? That was determined to be a groundwater system under the influence of the nearby river. And so then you had to meet all the enhanced surface water treatment rules, which really meant you needed a treatment plant and you didn't have one, okay? And that's how you got here. So you went looking for treated water in the formal sense, and CRW was the easiest option for you. Now, back in the day, and it wasn't that long ago, because this is about the time I started my consulting career, all right? Coming out of academia. It was an interesting time in Clackamas County, not that things have changed at all, right? But if you think that some of the things that are going on now is debate, you should have seen the water wars that were going on back then, okay? So it was interesting to sort of watch the parties try to divide up a very limited pie, but who was going to become king, all right? That's kind of the best way to describe what was going on, all right? And there wasn't a commission plant. There was just CRW and South Fork. And that's how everybody got their water. There wasn't any other sources. There's not an intake. That's the key, right? You have to have an intake on the river to get water out of the river. You got to get it out of there and building an intake's a big deal, all right? The City of Lake Oswego actually takes water out of the Clackamas but puts it in a pipe underneath the Willamette River and serves it over a treatment plant that's in the city of West Lynn. That's complicated, right? But it is, right? So they're on the other side of the river. So they don't really affect what we're doing per se, even though they're a partner in the entire source of the river itself. So as this water fight went on, particularly Oak Lodge, didn't really care for CRW at the time, and that's the best way to put it, all right? They said, we're going to go build our own treatment plant. And that's what they did. They headed off to go build this treatment plant. So they said, we're going to build our own plant. And the first portion of the plant they built is called a slow sand plant. It's a type of technology that's used for treating the plant. To call slow standard technology is an interesting feature, because where it really is, is just a big basin with sand in it. You put water in it, you filter it, put chlorine in it, serve it to your house. It's like a big cat box, right? You don't want to think about your treatment plant as being it, but that's really what it is. It's not very complicated, right? It's a lot of theory behind how it works and how it operates. Essentially, it's a live basin. It survives on its biological living organisms that are created in the treatment process. I want you to point out, though, it doesn't work very well in the wintertime. So when the river gets kind of muddy in the fall, in the wintertime, the slow sand gets clogged easily with that silt that comes in. So it has difficulty running when the turbid, that's the fancy word for saying there's mud in the water, gets pretty high. It doesn't have to get that dirty, actually, for it to cause problems in the slow sand. And they found that out after they started operating it, right? But all things are good. Oak Lodge ran out of money and came running to Mount, the then Mount Scott and Water, in Damascus Water Districts before Sunrise and said, hey, you got some money? And they said, sure, why not, as long as you give us part of the ownership of the plant, right? So that's how the partnership was formed. Sunrise needed water. Oak Lodge wanted a new plant and they had already started building it. Sunrise came along and helped them finance the remaining portion of that plant when it was first built, okay? Now, oddly enough, it's on the wrong side of the river, right? Because its principal member agencies are on the north side of the river. It got forced over there because of land use issues when it was originally constructed, okay? Really what happened was CRW bought the piece of property out from underneath them on the north side, where they had intended to put that plant and force them over onto the south side. That's how nasty it was, what was going on, okay? They built it anyway. So it's important to know that there's a main transmission or feed line that comes out of that plant that goes underneath the river. We'd never get that constructed again today. It would take forever, because we actually open-cut that pipeline. They dammed up the river, built the pipeline, and then let the river go again. We'd never be able to pull that off today, right? It was the last one of those that went in. But that pipeline becomes critical to the operation of that plant, right? Because it's the main feed from it, all right? Okay, then you have the South Fork Plant, which had been there for a very, very long time. And it has two customers, West Lynn and Oregon City. The bills for West Lynn and for South Fork are pretty easy. There's two lines. Literally, they did that, they don't have any retail customers and neither of this commission only has three lines. We send a bill to Oak Lodge every month, to Sunrise and to the City of Gladstone. So it's pretty simple, all right? So these are wholesale water providers and their basic purpose. Then in 2005, the City of Gladstone wanted greater permanence and ownership in its own plant, right? And decided, hey, you know, and about that same time, remember I told you that the slow stand plant didn't work very well in wintertime? And Sunrise needed some more water? This all came to a head and they said, hey, let's build some more plant. So they built another plant to hook to the first plant, but this one's a different kind of plant. This one's called a membrane filtration plant. And so it's based upon high-end sort of like ultra-pure technology you would see in terms of its use out of intel. So it's these synthetic cartridges that are used to filter the water and it's all based upon a big vacuum cleaner that operates it. It literally draws the water through these little fibrous tubes and treats it, okay? But the beauty of it is, it can take all kinds of mud, all right? So it doesn't have the problem that slow sand has. It does take a lot more energy to operate, but it can operate in all kinds of conditions. So now they have a wintertime water, source of water, on top of the fact that they can run the slow sand. In the summertime, like if you went out to the Clackamas River now, went out there and looked when it stops raining for a period of time, especially in July and stuff, it starts to get real clear, right? Close enough, almost, you could almost drink that stuff. I'm not suggesting that you do, right, on the one hand, but it gets pretty low in terms of its composition with regards to the dirt and other components. And it still needs disinfection and other things that go as part of that, okay? But they built a second half of this plant, both each 10 million gallons per day in capacity, at least on plate, is an engineered process. And so now there's two plants essentially that sit connected together over at the commission, all right? That second plant was largely financed by Sunrise needing the water. And then at about that same time, Gladstone wanted to buy in because they wanted to have their own permanent treatment plant, essentially, and wanted to have ownership in hard assets. CRW was not going to sell them that. And then the commission made an offer for that to happen. Now, some of you may know the history there, but at the time, Gladstone paid two and a half million dollars, gave up their water rights and some access to some use of pipelines that they had or shared pipelines that they put in place with the share with the commission in terms of its operations, essentially, okay? And now you are a member agent of your own water plant. That's how you got here. Okay? South Fork happily continues to serve water to West Lynn and Oregon City and does its operations now. CRW is kind of on its own, right? But also in that same period of time was back in 96, it picked up the south end, the Old Claremont Water District. So CRW has what they call a CRW North, which they used to serve, which is kind of cornerstoneed by the Town Center Mall and that area as you grow up into the southern part of Milwaukee, southeastern portion of Milwaukee, down across the river to the backside of the City of Oregon City in the Old Claremont Water District. And they serve what's called CRW South, okay? They do that service both through wholesale waters from the city, I'm sorry, from South Fork Water Board as well as their own pipeline system that they built here in the last couple of years, okay? So that's pretty much how it sits today, all right? And that's how we got here and that's how Gladstone got to be a member agent of the commission, okay? So you now take all of your drinking water from this facility and that's then used throughout your municipal operations, okay? So every household, fire hydrant, and the rest of them are all served by that, okay? How we really operate today is that you look at the lower portion of the river. There are, really, if you include us to cater, there are five major municipal withdrawals or treatment operations that are associated with the lower portion of the Clackamas River. And really, the ones that we partner ourselves with because of the proximity are really those four. There's CRW, there's the commission plant, there's South Fork. And then we also have to deal with, right? Even though we physically aren't attached to them, we deal with them for a lot of reasons. The City of Lake Oswego, which later was joined by the City of Tigard and their water partnership, right? Who owned that plant across the way, right? But they still draw on the Clackamas River as part of that. There has been a coalition of those partners formed in order to protect the source of water, particularly the Clackamas River. And if you haven't had an opportunity, there are opportunities in the fall to actually go and see some of these facilities, even float the river as a sponsored program through the Clackamas River Water Providers or CRWP. I left the web address up here and it's clackamasproviders.org. They have a tremendous amount of resources up there about your source of water. There's even a video of the plant, of the commission's plant. There's videos of South Fork and all the other major plants that are on the Clackamas, along with lots of resources about the watershed, facts and features and all that kind of stuff in here. So if you want to know a lot about water and you want to know a lot about your drinking water source, go to that website. There's a lot of great resources in there, right? And you pay for it. You are a member of the Clackamas River Water Providers, okay? Being a member of the Clackamas County Water Commission, all right? So we are connected. No longer can we operate by ourselves. This resource is seen by the state as a community resource, right? As a regional resource. And we have to play by a lot of different rules that we didn't have to play for with a long time ago, right? But that requires us to do this together. You used to be able to head out on your own. You can no longer do that in this provisions, okay? It's part of that process. And I'll point this out with a couple of stories for you that are more relevant. This is a busy slide and it's intended to be busy because it shows all of the key assets that are necessary for us to really operate our facilities. Shows the major reservoirs and major interconnecting pipelines between the South Fork Plant, which you can see down on the very bottom of that figure, it says South Fork Water Board Water Treatment Plant. If you look very carefully, you'll see the commission's 20 million gallon per day plant in there. You'll also see CRW's water treatment plant. And then also various infrastructures, both within the City of Gladstone, Oak Lodge Water Services, CRW, and Sunrise, all right? So why does this all matter? You never even know this stuff is out there. Most of all, this stuff is buried. The only thing sticking out of the ground once in a while is a pump station, but it's usually inside of a brick house and you don't know what it is. You go, what's that funny thing? It just says, stay out. By penalty of law, right, kind of thing, right? And the other thing that sticks out are the reservoirs, right? These are all above ground. Either they're steel or concrete, but they stick out in some cases quite prominently, depending on where they are, essentially, right? But all that infrastructure is used to maintain and provide service to each of the member agencies. In other words, so we have long come past the days in which, you know, you were you and mine was mine and it was it kind of thing to a more collective use of these resources. And there has been significant improvements in infrastructure made between interconnecting those plants, South Fork, the commission, and CRW. So when something bad comes along, and what do you think of as bad? It's very common in the wintertime, ice storms. And the last one we had was not long ago. Might have knocked the power out of your house for more than a week. Well, knocked out South Fork's power for 10 days. And if South Fork was left on its own, it had no power, zero. It had two feeds on the transmission side from electrical sources and no backup generator. It was, had no power. It had no way to serve water to all of Oregon City or West Lynn. They literally drew down their reservoir and were out of water within the first day. So who did it? We did, right? Through a combination of taking back feed from CRW's plant into the commission and then the commission feeding up those interconnections up to South Fork, no one in Oregon City or West Lynn even knew that they were without water. And we made it easier because it was in the middle of winter when demand is really low. So there was plenty of water, so we didn't have to ask everybody else to stop watering their lawn while we did it, okay? So it became very easy, but those are the kind of things that we do. It's been a lot of our time looking at, or what would happen if it didn't go well? It's nice when it does go well, because it's easy, right? When it doesn't go well, it takes a lot of work. And in the middle of that ice storm, I can remember sort of having to check in with staff, even myself, every two hours. Operationally, we were drawing on your reservoirs. You might have heard about this story. We drew your reservoirs down. So your alarms were screaming in the middle of the night. We drew Oak Lodge's reservoirs down and they were screaming the night. We just said, it'll be fine. Just let it happen, okay? But we needed to do that in order to push water back up to South Fork to keep everybody going. And everybody was very assistive, including Gladstone staff, in making things happen. There are certain gaps in our technology between each of us that still require us to call somebody at Gladstone and have them run over and shut a valve. Hey, Bob, can you run over and shut that valve on Portland Avenue? So we do that to make all that stuff happen, but it did, all right? So we're pretty proud. And I wanted to thank, you know, Gladstone staff essentially for being a true participant when these emergencies happen, right? And so I always leave this with everybody who is a member agency, right? Someday, it's going to be you and you hope that everybody else comes to your rescue too, right? Because that's really the goal, right? So I'm quite proud of our ability to do that and the relationships that we've established, because it's a way different environment than it used to be back in 1998, okay? And even when you came into the commission in 2005, we've radically changed how we operate, okay? Yeah.
Could you go back to that first slide before this?
Yeah.
Did we get a packet?
Yes, we're going to give you a copy.
Oh, then never mind.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is it common not to have backup generators at the water treatment plants?
Well, Oregon, well, South Fork made a very important decision and they did so believing that they had established two very different feeds from very different parts of the transmission system. In other words, they thought they were separated. In other words, there was a sort of an east feed that they were relying on and there was a west feed that they were relying on, right? And it has never had both of them taken down, ever. And that was kind of the idea. The concept was, you know, both of them, the chance that both of them go out could be, it's got to be pretty low. There you go. Ice storms can be vicious around here, right? That they just put so much weight on lines and trees and you just get a lot of damage from them, right? Well, and this particular one was one of the worst ice storms in, what was it, 80 years, they said, maybe even 100, right? So we found out what that was like, so it did in fact take them down. They are looking at now building backup generation up at South Fork, okay? But it also has a number of problems, even in the ice storm. Don't, you know, don't think that just because they have a generator, you're going to get your problem solved, because most backup generation relies on diesel fuel. So you have to have enough diesel to get in, right? There's a whole nother story about how we had, we got it, we lucked out. We came within about a half an hour running out of fuel at the CRW plant.
You're bringing back nightmares for me. I remember all of this vividly.
Oh, you have no idea, lady. As I'm sweating bullets going, okay, this is time for all of us to become very religious, right? Okay, a lot of praying is going to have to happen here because we couldn't get diesel deliveries in, right? And so it became a real problem. Both the backup generation at the North Clackamas County Water Commission and South Fork rely on those diesel fuel deliveries, essentially. So, you know, short of some helicopter dropping them in, which wasn't going to happen, it turns out we lucked out. There's a long story about that, but a little luck helps a lot when this stuff is going on, right? Okay? Yeah.
Wade, you spoke about these kind of water wars and very competitive systems and I assume somewhat separate infrastructure for a while. But obviously, if you're able, if one provider is able to help provide water to another in a crisis like that and somebody knows which valve to tell Bob to turn in Gladstone, you have much greater knowledge and interconnection now between these systems than I guess you did at one time. What prompted that? Was it, was it just an awareness of your need to rely on one another and the need for preventive design?
It's a good question. I think, I think it's, it's just like the question has multi-facets to it, right? I think what we've learned over time is, if nothing else, the sheer operational cost and infrastructure cost for dealing with these problems is so expensive, you can't do it on your own. So once you realize your vulnerabilities and they can be exposed by weather or other natural disasters or other things that are going on, you soon realize you need some friends. And it didn't take long to figure that out. But while you're all down battling, your head's down too far down that you can't see, you know, through the trees, essentially, right? I think we got some relief after a little while where we could start looking through the trees. We got some people at the table who could see the trees and wanted to see the sky. And that helped a lot, because we were looking down for a long time. And I think that, that changed dramatically when we started looking up. And it only, it had to do with a real change in attitude, I think, in terms of the vulnerability of when you look at these facilities and the cost to make you not vulnerable to one of these problems. You're much better off relying on your friends, right? And it became obvious, but at the time when you're fighting, that's not how, that's not how it goes, right? You know, so what might have been obvious and logical wasn't obvious and logical back then. We prayed for better times and we got them, right? But we also did some things to make that happen too, right? You might imagine I'm a pretty big advocate for playing along, right? So, all right, so here's, here's a bunch of numbers that will give you some idea, though, how this plant is operated and who's taking the water. This is just a snapshot from last year. ADD stands for average daily demand, okay? And PDD stands for peak daily demand. So these are, these are the kinds of things we use, we talk about in acronyms, everything, right? There's the NCC, WC, SC, RVP, ADD, PBD, right? So we think people know what we're talking about. They have no clue, right? We're just talking about what's the truly the average daily demand. So that's the total volume of water you take over the year divided by 365 days, okay? So that's the total volume of water you take over the year divided by 365 days, okay? And the peak days, we just go through and look and find the largest demand you have in the annual year, right? And that's your peak day demand, okay? And this gives you, peaking factors are, the peaks are important for us because that's how we size infrastructure. That's how big the pipes have to be. That's how big the ultimate treatment plant has to be in order to meet full service requirements essentially, right? But there's, you know, interesting fact is that it's still true. It's getting much better than it used to be, but essentially all the water that you use indoors to survive essentially during the wintertime like now, you aren't growing your lawn, you're not turning your sprinklers on, you're not washing your car. You might this weekend, but not last weekend. It was 38 degrees out or something, right? So, you know, we call that sustenance demand. If you take the sustenance demand to survive with like in February over the entire year, an equal amount of water goes on people's lawns and exterior use in the summertime alone. So that's how dramatic it is, right? So that's why you see it's barking at conservation and these kinds of things, not just because it saves water, save a lot of money too, right?
So, and that may be getting at a question I have where if you look at Gladstone and Oak Lodge, the difference between the average and the peak daily demand is, you know, close to about two times, right? But if you look at Sunrise, it's like three times. It's a huge differential between average and peak. Is that a golf course? Like what's going on over there? There's such a huge difference in their peak demand.
Counselor Cook, you should get the Brownie Award for tonight. So you get the blue ribbon for noticing that my numbers, right? Very good, by the way. So you have to, to answer your question, it's got a little complication to it. So see that CRW water that's up there? That has to come in by contract and it's a minimum supply contract. So it comes in, right now Sunrise uses most of all that water. So it comes into the commission, but Sunrise uses it, right? So when you put that two and a half back into their average daily demand, now it's 5.8, right? Okay, see? Yeah. And Sunrise even has wells and stuff and they use some other waters. They can peak off some stuff. But Sunrise peaks off the commission plant because of that minimum supply arrangement with CRW, okay? And it has a lot to do with how Sunrise takes water. So you can't feel too bad for Sunrise because they're doing it, right? Because they're over there and that over there requires them to take water over there. And there's special delivery points that CRW can only deliver that water to through those points essentially. So that's why they take it. But we have a supply agreement with CRW to have it more robust in case other member agencies like Gladstone or Oak Lodge or others could use CRW if it needed to for other purposes that it desires as part of that process, okay? But that's just part of the grander picture of how we operate together essentially, even inside the member agencies essentially, right? But good catch, right? But then when you put those numbers back in there, they look more consistent, right? Yeah, huh, perfect, alright? Give you an idea, we, you know, the commission produces just shy of 3 billion gallons of water a year right now, okay? We take another just under billion gallons of water from CRW, right? It's part of that process, okay? And you can see historically what those demands look like in the little fancy graph over there. And Gladstone's demand on an annual, I mean, on a quarterly basis in there is shown in the orange. And Oak Lodge is in the blue and Sunrise is in the silver, right? And then the 12-month running average of the commission's production is up in the top there. And you can see, we're not sure, but we think we can see some of the conservation efforts that you and Oak Lodge are doing right now and some of the fixings that you're making to the system for leak detection, you know, leak loss and stuff, right? We're starting to see the demand come down, interesting enough, right? So it's hard to see that sometimes because the weather has such a huge influence on it. But we are seeing some of the gains, if you will, of your efforts since part of that process, okay? So I wanted to commend you for taking those actions. And I know you're doing it, you know, for your own community, but it also helps the commission out a lot as well too, okay? Extends the usefulness of those assets essentially, right? So that's how water is currently being drawn out of the system, okay? The funding for it's pretty simple. You buy water and we run the plant. It's just that simple. The model's pretty easy, right? So what we end up doing and budgeting like for this year is we get estimates from each of the member agencies on what their annual demand is going to be, is forecasted. We come up with a forecasted budget for operations, including labor and material services. And then some reserve is placed in for capital so we can continue to finance that future capital as necessary. And those three components go into the overall cost of the operation. So we just take the total demand, divide it into the total cost and that's how you get our unit price. So everybody pays for the same price of water, right? This is assumed that it's delivered. It comes out of the commission and goes over through Oak Lodge's system into their Valley View Reservoir. Actually, you get served by gravity out of the Valley View Reservoir. It goes to Valley View, then comes back into Gladstone, essentially is how it works. So this is really the cost you can think of that's served at Valley View, alright? Sunrise pays then additional cost to have it pumped, right? From there up into Sunrise into its two points of delivery. And Gladstone, because its gravity doesn't pay for pumping costs, right? It just comes back to them. You pay for it and the cost of the production of the plant, alright? So it's a pretty simple model financially. We think that's very fair. People pay for what they use, right? And then we set a common capital reserve account in place to maintain and operate that plant, alright? That capital reserve is used to pay for all the repairs and replacements of the plant. It is now, you know, it came into commissioning and operation in 2005 and so it's almost 20 years old at this point. So some of the many mechanical systems, including even some of the structures, the roofs and some of the things need replacements. So we have to have money available to do that, right? You can't just say, hey, I'll just wait and fix this pump, right? Or fix a part of the treatment plant and Gladstone can go without water for the next month. Doesn't work like that, right? So we have to have cash reserves so we can get to it. We hopefully are doing on scheduled basis and not on, you know, run to failure. So we do quite a bit of planned maintenance and planned replacements at the plant in order to avoid, you know, failure, okay? So that's a very important thing for us. But the financing model is pretty simple and everybody pays the same for water, okay? So what are we, and you know, what's up against us now? Well, as I told you, right, the system maintenance repair never goes away. That's always part of this deal, right? This is a complicated automobile that runs every day and then takes the load. And so it has to, it has to have, it has to have some love and care, right, on a regular basis, okay? As we move into the future, we're just getting more and more prepared for emergency responses, right? We're constantly thinking about the big one. And what would we do in those processes and how we might survive as part of that process? And I can talk to you a little bit more about that. But there's never enough money really to solve the real problems that hold me exist. So we have to be really smart with what we do. We're looking for alternatives. The one thing that the Clackamas Basin suffers from, it doesn't have a real source of alternate source of water. The Clackamas River feeds 400,000 people without a secondary backup, right? There used to be a plan for that, but it was removed when the Westsiders decided to build their own treatment plant and forego the city of Portland. Because they are served, if you're, a large portion of their service, especially Tooele Valley Water District, used to come from the city of Portland through a transmission pipeline that goes under the Lamont River from the Portland side. There was supposed to be a plan to build a second one of those, which would have taken it right down into Clackamas and would have been its backup source of water. But no, it never got built, okay? So we live and thrive on the Clackamas River. And then we have to figure out how we're going to manage that properly amongst ourselves, okay? So that emergency planning now becomes even more important for us because there ain't nobody else coming to save us when the water goes out, right? It's just us. The Clackamas people are doing it by ourselves. And we have a longstanding legal issue with withdrawing water out of the Clackamas River. You may have heard about the permit extensions. I mean, maybe you're not familiar with the case, but you've been paying for it. So since 2005, we have been tied up in the court system getting access to permit extensions, municipal permit extensions for the Clackamas, for the North Clackamas County Water Commission, along with South Fork and Lake Oswego. The case is gone all the way to the Supreme Court. It got remanded back to the state, went back to the Court of Appeals. It just was in the Court of Appeals. And the Court of Appeals again supported the state's ruling and how to resolve the issue. Water Watch is the party that's bringing suit, has now filed for it to go back to the Court of, I'm sorry, to the Supreme Court. We'll see where it's headed. But, you know, it's been what, 17, 18 years now? And if I had a lot of time, I could tell you about how that has played out and how difficult that has been for us. In some regards, the legal costs have been, I think, unfortunate that we've had to deal with this for so many years. All the other expert testimony that went into paying for it has been substantial. But it really hasn't changed how we operate when we're going to continue serving our member agencies. And in the state's not going to cut off water to 145,000 people, right? It's not going to happen. And in the larger context, they have 400,000 people that rely on the Clackamas. They're going to have to find a way to resolve those permit extensions essentially. It's a technical issue associated with Oregon water rights essentially. But a municipal provider, just like anybody who gets a water right, gets it issued to them as a permit, typical individual parties have to prove up on that use and they get it certified, if you're familiar with the term. And they can only use that certified water rights. But municipal water rights, it's more complicated. You have a long period of time to certify it. Hence the ranklets have gone on, okay? So it allows for planning up to 100 years and for those permit extensions to be utilized accordingly. And so that's been the issue, okay? Is who has the rights to the water in the Clackamas? Because it is getting to the point where in the fall, when we look at in-stream flow requirements to support fish and other habitat stuff in there, right? We're getting close to the number that requires us all to play along, just put it that way. In some cases, we may have to play a little more like controlling, you know, outdoor use and stuff like that in the future as we demand more water if we do, okay? So you may have seen the campaign that the CRW P has put out. Some of you probably approached about fish on the run, outdoor use is done. Have you ever heard that, right? We can get your little fish from this CRW P and put it in your front yard if you want to in the fall, when we go into doing that, okay? But access the Clackamas River is a big deal.
So this lawsuit that's going on all of this time is basically a disagreement over how much of the river should be used for drinking water versus recreational uses or just, you know, its environmental presence in the region or habitat for other things. Is that, are those the issues? And it's kind of a balancing of what proportion perhaps is appropriate?
That is correct. You nailed it right on the head, right? And so Water Watch believes they're speaking for them spoken, particularly the fish, right? And other, you know, habitat species that rely on the flow in the river. And so they have advocated in behalf, you know, in the legal court system for doing that essentially, right? And have taken odds with both the Clackamas River Water Provider's use of that river and how they plan to use it. And state's authority even to allocate that water and how they've allocated it, right? And other features as part of that process. So it's been interesting to sort of watch this play out. But that's exactly, and that's the bulk of the case. Who has the right to basically advocate, you know, to say who gets to use the Clackamas River, right? The state has always advocated that constitutionally it has, it owns and operates and controls the waters within its boundaries like any state does, right? But there were federal rules and all kinds of other things that sort of preempt those kind of things that make it way more cloudy than that, right? It's been interesting to see us play through this process. The one sad thing about this is we, so there were some new rules written around this several years ago. And we were case one to go up against those new standards, unfortunately. The state has yet to resolve a process and protocol in which to resolve those standards essentially. And so we've been battling just that, how to prove that those withdrawals are not interest to that environment, right? And that's really the key.
It hasn't been that long that we recognized that trees and fish and other things had what we would call rights. And that people could argue for their rights on their behalf and then weigh them against the rights of municipalities or states or others, so. Yeah, they are complicated issues and I appreciate your waiting through them all these years.
Right? No pun intended, right? I know, I got you, right? But yeah, it has, on the state level, it's been very interesting. In the federal level, you know, anytime you come up an endangered species, particularly the fish, you're going to have this issue to deal with both at both levels, both the federal level, right? And the state level as well. Several years ago, the city of Salem went through a very interesting case trying to expand a pipeline off their Garen Alleyam plant, which sits out in the middle of the San Tiam River essentially, right? And they needed to go out there and do in-water construction in order to build that pipeline. That was quite a little go for them, right? But they were solely under basically the federal rules essentially and had process and protocols within the court systems in order to advocate a procedure of how to determine just that injury essentially or not, right? And the state's never adopted similar rules and just left them open for us to do this. And so it's been really interesting, right? So I use those kindly. I have other words to say when I'm not in public. Like what a waste of public money. Because the ruling that's been in place now has been in place for more than 10 years out of that, out of that, the 18. And so we just keep battling over points of law. Nothing about, anything about the injury to the river and so on and so forth is part of that process, okay?
One more question. This five-member board that you have, who chairs that board?
It rotates every year, right? So guess who does now? Counselor Robert.
Thank you, Counselor Robert.
He did an awesome job showing up and saying, hey, since you're here, did you know that you're also chair, right? Yeah, so his first meeting was really good, right? So, and it happened to be a budget committee meeting too as well, so.
Oh, you throw him into the deep end.
You threw him into the deep end, right? But you saw how simple our budget is, right? Here's the cost and here's how much water and we divide it and here's your number. It wasn't that bad, right?
Thank you so much. Are there other questions from counselors? Counselor Rieckel, Counselor Garland, Counselor Garland, can you have your hand up, I see?
I do. I just have one question. What is the lifeline of the Valley View Water Tank? How much longer is that good for?
That's an interesting question. It depends on how much money Oak Lodge wants to spend on repairing it, right? So, I mean, tanks, generally the reservoir itself will last a long time. It's really more the mechanical systems, the pump stations, the other things that are feeding it. There are more of a, more at risk essentially. So we don't have any concerns about the reservoir itself per se, okay? It's really more the mechanical systems and almost all parts of the systems are more vulnerable really from an asset point of view, okay?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
When you say the Sunrise Water Authority? I text someone the other day, this elderly lady, she had to go pay her bill. And we went up Sunnyside, turned left on 122nd, went all the way to the end and that was the sunrise. So does this water go to Happy Valley? Is that? Okay, that's what I want.
Yeah, so this water goes all the way out to Damascus. It goes out past 242nd Avenue. So the last pipe in the ground for Sunrise is around 250th Avenue. So all the way out to Boring.
And well, then my other question, I remember, I don't know how many years ago, was it when they were putting that pump station at the end of Portland Avenue? And everybody was saying, oh, you know, this gets pumped all the way to Tiger and Tooleton and, you know, they should be paying us for their water. Is that, that's an issue that's all been solved, right? Or did they fix our streets or wasn't there some kind of deal we were supposed to get for them putting that pump station in down there?
You're talking about the Lake Oswego intake?
Is that what?
I believe so. I don't have the history on that, but I think that's the project you're referring to.
And that's the one that has to go under that pipeline that they put across?
Yeah, down in the park in Gladstone, down, you know, down near the river, right? You see the Lake Oswego's intake there, that big structure that's sitting there. That is their intake for their treatment plant that's across the Lamont.
And does Tiger get some of it too?
It did, they do.
Tooleton or no?
No, it's just Tiger and Lake Oswego.
Okay, that's, yeah.
I think the big takeaway as elected officials is that your citizens just rely when they turn their faucet that the water is going to come in and that it's there for them. And it's so complex in that we rely on each other regionally to provide this service. And like Wade said, we've established those partnerships ahead of time. So in a moment of crisis, we are there together. And the ice storm that happened was our Public Works Director first week on the job. And he was immersed. He did fantastic. And we were concerned, but we were communicating with all the other entities and everything worked exactly how it's supposed to. So there was no disruption for the citizens in their service.
I also want to say I travel quite a bit for work and I always forget how good our water quality is until I travel to another state and I drink their water and man, what a privilege to have such fresh and amazing Oregon water. So thank you for your work.
And we're still one of the few water treatment plant facilities that are still producing unit water cost under a dollar essentially, right? So we're very conscious of that with our member agencies, as we pointed out, right? We take it very seriously to utilize public funds, the best benefit that get generated by that. And yeah, on top of that, though, the water wins a lot of, it has won some national awards for its taste, but also oftentimes wins the Northwest Regional Water Tasting Competition all the time. Right? Who knew? But there are noses for water, just like there is for wine, right? So, yeah. Anything else you want to know about your water?
I think we're good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for taking over, uh, taking the time and inviting me over. It's always a pleasure to speak before folks, right? About what we do and, uh, I share some of your same experience. I this is my first time as a as running for election. I'm actually on the Community College Board as well too. So I have my shameless pitch for I'm I'm running for office, right? Right? Okay. Well, thank you very much, right? And have a great evening. And if there's any other questions you come up, feel free to push those to Jackie. He'd be more than happy to answer questions.
Appreciate you providing this for us.
And at some point, we'd love to have you over treatment plant. If you want to go in there and go for a tour, happy to take people in there, right? They love having people over there. Okay. All right. All right.
I think we're we're up to like four different treatment plants, uh, whose providers we've heard from some treated on one end, some treated on the other end. But, uh, you know, it's it's always, there's always something going on with water around.
There is, and we're also trying to book Clackamas Water River Providers to come and do a presentation. And they usually do send an invitation for the rafting that Wade referred to. And if elected officials want to do that annual trip, then we can get you signed up when that happens.
Very cool. All right. The next item on our work session agenda is to review the city of Gladstone City Council Rules. The rules, uh, we have a copy in our packet of the resolution number eleven twenty nine, which was adopted back at the beginning of twenty eighteen, I believe. After a rules revision process that went on through two twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And our charter, there were some inconsistencies in our charter with some of the rules. So we we want to make some changes that are necessitated by necessitated by our having adopted a new charter through the vote of citizens. But also we want to look these rules over and make sure that they are what we want them to be. So Administrator Betts, do you have any anything to say to introduce this process?
Well, I think, uh, Counselor Garland had started trying to go page by page. And then we said, well, let's let's wait till we have a work session. So I'm not sure if maybe that's the best start to go back to. I know we got through the first page. I would defer to Counselor Garland if that was her intent to go page by page. To see where there were any changes and also if there's not changes or just a topic that you guys want to revisit so that everybody's aware of. Let's follow the rules together. It doesn't necessarily have to be a proposed change. This is a time for you to review them, to get clarity. To make sure that you're all in agreement with the rules that govern. Um, we do have the city attorney with us tonight to also help guide that conversation.
All right. Thank you, Chad, for being here and for your help with this process. The last time we did it, I remember a lot of meetings around a table in the old city hall. Where I believe you were present and Tammy Bannock was present and a couple of city councilors and volunteers in the community. So uh, it it was a process that involved a lot of people back then, and, uh, I hope we did most of it right, but there may be things that we need to revisit. So, um, how would you like to proceed? Would you? Would you like to just bring issues up one by one? Go in order, uh, go in in order of importance to you. What what's your pleasure on this?
I think page by page would be easier.
Okay. All right, Counselor Huckabee is saying page by page might be a good structured way to go. We may not get through all of it tonight, but you know, we're we're, uh, bound by the charter to do it during an odd number of years. So we have until December. But I hope we'll finish it much quicker than that, but let's do that. And.
I was gonna say, um, cause you, like you said, we probably won't get there on if 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 when people got their packet, like I read, I just noted my the ones I wanted to talk about. I didn't know if everyone did that. We were just gonna address those or.
I I think, yeah, I think that's probably what a lot of people did and we can do it that way. So if we go in order, then you can say, I'm okay with this page, or I have one question about this item on this page, and that'll be a good structured way to go. So page one. Does anyone have any comments on page two dash three of the packet, which is page one of the rules from the original, uh, resolution?
Yes, Counselor Garland had already discussed in the first sentence to change those charter sections to, I believe, eleven, twelve, thirteen to reflect the charter.
Twelve fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry.
Okay, so that will bring us, uh, those references then will will be corrected to show the the current charter. The paragraphs and sections in the new charter don't necessarily correspond to the numbers that they had in the charter that preceded it.
And then further in that paragraph, you guys came to a consensus for the second to last sentence. Or third to last to say the council will review this resolution at least odd years. That's the note that I made.
Okay.
Instead of annually?
Correct.
Uh, because I believe it's the charter itself that has the odd year requirement. Um, Chad, do you recall if that's the case? That was one of the the things that we felt was inconsistent.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. So the council will review this resolution or these rules in every odd numbered year. Something to that effect. Okay. And, uh, as I recall this process, the last time Tammy Bannock took very good notes. And, uh, by the next time we met, a lot of what we had drafted uh, around a table ended up printed on a paper. And I hope that a process similar to that is going on now. So.
We're gonna give it our best shot.
Very good. Thank you.
Should that sentence say rules and not resolution?
Yeah, we'll we'll say rules instead of resolution.
Thank you. I had two further notes from Counselor Garland that under section C, uh, Chad was going to add some language regarding Zoom or remote participation under one. And then under number two, the last sentence needs to read typically no public comment will be allowed during work sessions. And that's as far as I believe we got.
All right. Do other councillors have items marked in the same section?
Council means I do.
On 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 the first page or you over to the second?
Well, I were talking about council meetings. We talked to number two. I got number eight on the next.
Okay, so let's turn the page then to number eight.
Yeah, I just I just wondered how and. So the, um, right here, where we say, um, in number eight, it says the meetings will be held in compliance for the Oregon Public Meetings Law. Well, I don't know what the public meetings laws are, but I know it says right here, council members may participate and vote in council meetings, which Zoom, so we have people on Zoom, you're on Zoom, you can vote and and participate. But then it says meeting via telephone electronically or by other means consistent with the Oregon Public Meeting Law. Who, I mean, if you're not at the meeting and you're not on Zoom, is is that, can you call on a phone and you know what I'm saying?
You you may remember a meeting when we had to appoint councillor vacancies uh, in twenty seventeen and a councillor was not able to be present at the meeting. But we had a a speakerphone up on the dais and that councillor was able to participate uh, by telephone. So that was the technology at the time.
Right, but now with.
Now with Zoom, we have a different way, but it could still be done by phone. If somebody was somewhere and didn't have access to Zoom, they could still call it in. We'd hold the phone up to a microphone and say, councillor Alexander, you're off in Timbuktu, but you know, tell us what your vote is.
All right. I just wondered, well, that's why I didn't know what that's why I asked with consistent with the Oregon Public Meeting Law. What is the Oregon Public Meeting Law? I don't know what that is. So ours is ours different by that or, you know, would you know that, Chad? Is that?
Yeah. So the state has public meetings laws, just like a public records law. It's all in ORS chapter one ninety two, and we can put the specific citations in there if you want. Uh, but it's just the the public meetings law that the state has enacted in ORS chapter one ninety two.
So it's no big, I mean, like, like the mayor said, if if you need to call in, that just stays in there. So you can call in and be part of the.
Yeah, state law allows you to have meetings by telephone or other electronic.
Well, then there that's that was what I got my question answered. Thank you.
Now, certainly we'd be within our rights. Pardon me, Counselor Garland, I'll call on you in a second. Uh, it would be within our rights to to say that you have to be present in order to vote, I suppose. But we want to be more inclusive and fully representative. So we're making this allowance for people. I know and sometimes the state legislatures and you know, uh, we just had a group of high school kids that went back east on a on a trip and visited the Senate. You know, the senators have to drag themselves into that room and vote present while they're there.
Things, you know, like Portland, they, you know, they said the same thing of you, it was before the pandemic, though. So that's what I wondered with the Zoom. That's why I just was asking with Zoom, do we need the phone thing now, you know? That's all I was my my concern was.
I I think, yeah, I think that in the language here via telephone electronically or by other means, it's pretty, pretty broad. So I think that we don't have to mention the Zoom technology itself. I think that's incorporated in the technology that and then in these means that are mentioned here. Counselor Garland, you had a a comment or?
Yeah, I, um, I understand that we could that participation that we we allow participation in a meeting. But there are a lot of cities that do not allow that kind of voting. And we are on email. But I I guess maybe I'd like to just hear what other people are thinking about. Be being at a meeting to vote, you know, if I I guess you could kind of say, if you didn't want to take the time to show up to the meeting, why do you get to vote? I, you know, if it's not Zoom or in person, if all you're doing is to making a phone call, is that really being present at a meeting to vote? I mean, that is just a thought. I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah. I I think, um, my perspective is that we should be encouraging as much diversity as possible in the makeup of our council. And I think what that means is that some people may have a medical condition that precludes them from being present. They may have childcare concerns that may may make it challenging for them to be physically present while they might be able to engage fully. You know, there's there's many reasons why someone might, um, need to participate virtually as opposed to in person. And I think that if we you know, make it more difficult, um, to restrict someone's ability to participate in council who was elected. You know, by the people to serve. Um, I think that that will not further our goals of being an inclusive and participatory council that reflects the makeup of the city of Gladstone.
I I remember the one Michael was talking about now, but that's the only reason I ask about it was because the person was not present at the meeting at all. And there was two other votes, but they only called in and gave one vote for that one vote. You remember that, right?
I think so.
Yeah. So that's why I was just wondering, is it? You know, do you have to be, uh, I mean, you can listen to the whole meeting right here and listen and say, okay, and vote on two or three things. But can you, you know, that's why I ask is it via telephone to pick it up and go on this one vote. Okay, I'm done voting. Thanks. I'm I'm at the airport or something, you know what I mean? So I didn't know. That's why I just wanted to know. We wanted that wording in there. And I didn't know what the Oregon Public Meeting Law was. So that's why I asked.
Counselor Huckabee?
I haven't personally used it, but can't you just use a phone to dial into a Zoom meeting without the video? Like you can just call into the meeting. So that would be the same thing as. I mean, the instructions are right here on our on our agenda on how to do that. Which would be the same thing as a phone call.
There may be circumstances when, um, your participation in a meeting by phone is what helps to establish the quorum required for the meeting to take place.
I agree.
Uh, in that case, you need to really stay present and not draw just drop in or out. But with any matter that has to be voted on, uh, I think you have the right to choose whether you do or don't vote. And I think there's something in the rule that that says you can declare, I'm not going to vote on this, uh, on this particular matter. Counselor Rieckel, I see your hand up.
Yes, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Um, I just would like to speak also to kind of, um, piggyback on what Counselor Cook was, uh, sharing. It very much, you know, for me, I'm a prime example of something happened to me right after I was, you know, sworn in and it was unforeseen. I still appreciate and want to participate to the best of my ability. And I think honestly, things are so different than they were in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. We've been through a pandemic. All of these things, I think, continuing to allow, um, excuse me, electronic participation in whatever form that is, is critical to our community. I think we are a lot more accessible than we have ever been before because we have electronic option. So I think it's important that we keep it not only for us, but for our community as well. And that's all.
All right. As I see it, we have two items that we want to kind of or or two issues that we want to resolve in this. First of all, do we want to preserve the language that allows, uh, remote participation in general? And then secondly, if we decide that we do want to preserve that in our rules, do we want to, um, modify the language here or do we consider it, um, comprehensive enough that it covers technology that didn't play, uh, that didn't exist when these rules were first adopted? So let me ask you the first question. Do we want to continue allow people to participate in meetings via electronic means?
If I could just interject, I think if Chad can, uh, verify, but I think House Bill twenty five sixty already states that we are required to do that. So I think the city council has to continue to provide those means.
Okay. And that's not just means of public participation and access to our meetings. It it's the means by which the councillors themselves participate. Chad, can you weigh in on that a little bit?
Yeah, to be honest, I'd have to look up House Bill twenty five sixty. I know it applies to the public. I am not a hundred percent sure off the top of my head whether or extends to members of the council. I will say, however, that, um, you know, it's been longstanding tradition under the Oregon Public Meeting Law to allow people to fully participate in the meetings. I'm not aware that many jurisdictions limit that. And, you know, I think a major reason for that is that quite often people just don't have the technology to be able to participate in other means. And so whether that's because they're traveling, whether that's because they're in some sort of emergency situation, you know, in the hospital, I've I've been in meetings where members of the council have participated from a hospital bed via telephone. And there's just various reasons why someone may not want to be on camera via Zoom. Um, and to the extent that you're not on camera, there's really no difference from being on the telephone or not. The other thing that, you know, I think is worthwhile thinking about is emergency situations. And, you know, if in fact we have a true emergency like the big one that they were just talking about in the last presentation, you know, whether and to what extent you're really going to have, you know, some of these electronic means available. And you may just need to be able to have telephones. So having that sort of flexibility in your rules is probably a good policy decisions to think about as well.
Those are good points. Then strike what I was saying. I was just asking the question. I was just, you know, you know, a telephone. Yeah, Zoom, everything. I agree with all that. I just didn't know about picking up a phone and going, hey. Well, and then, you know, I didn't know.
And I think I think another point in in a city of two and a half square miles, it it's almost, you know, you're almost suspected everybody could could get to a meeting or easily get access by phone. But we have counties across the state that are, you know, hundreds of times that size or more. And, uh, so.
And if we ever needed to interact with one of them, we might have to get.
Well, all right. So I'm I'm hearing, uh, I think a consensus that we want to keep this access. Do we need to change the wording? Counselor, uh, Garland, can you have your hand up again?
My question is, um, and I understand completely about the participation. That was, I guess that wasn't where I was going. I was going with the vote. So it says participation and vote. So do we want to make that participation or vote? So you don't have to be on the meeting. You can just call up and vote and get out of the meeting.
That's sort of what I was, yeah, okay. She put it better than I did, you know? So I don't know how the we wanted to word that one. That was my concern as well. Everybody needs to participate however they can. And even if you can sit on the phone and listen and talk, that's fine. But can you just call in to vote? I guess is that? See, I don't know how we're, I just didn't know if that was it.
Yeah.
You remember that last time.
I don't think it should read as an either or. Uh, you have the right to participate. You have the right to vote. If you say and then then both rights are preserved. Um, so I I would be for leaving this sentence the exactly the way it is.
Same.
All right.
Okay.
Same as well.
Okay, we've three people have said they want to leave it the same.
Yes, I'd like to leave it the same.
All right.
I think I have a s- adjacent concern.
All right. Let's hear you. Okay.
Um, so I know that we're really relying on House Bill twenty five sixty to kind of set parameters here. My understanding and correct me if I'm wrong, was that that was really passed in. Sorry, Siri. Passed in response to the pandemic. So is there a possibility that that, you know, if that House Bill is amended, would that change our city council rules if that House Bill is amended or changed or resisted? That house bill is amended or changed or rescinded.
Well, the language that we have here was created, uh, prior to the pandemic, before the adoption of that bill. And I think I'm sensing a consensus that we leave it the way it is. We, we've reviewed it in a larger context now that they did at that time. But I think all the basic principles involved are the same. And, uh, the language is, is broad enough. That it allows us to do what we didn't do five years ago. I will turn the volume down on this device so that Siri no longer speaks to us. Sorry about that. Okay. Beyond item eight, anything else on this page two dash four?
I have something on nine.
Okay.
Last bullet point. Um, it says other absences as excused by the mayor and in case of the mayor. As excused by the council president. Should it say in case of the mayor's absence?
Yeah, I think that's just another typo. Oh, uh, no, I think what it means is that in order to excuse that the mayor doesn't excuse himself or herself. Or their self, uh, the mayor would be excused by the council president if it was the mayor requesting to be excused.
And okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. I know that we have, uh, Matt, we've made some changes recently in the order that we allowed on, uh, in, in, in our public comments. We added an item for, um. Public announcements, I could just call it that of community events. And we put that near the beginning of the meeting. And at one time we had moved public comments to near the end of the meeting. What is, what is your feeling about this, this order for the agenda? How flexible do we want to be? How much do we want to commit ourselves to a particular order? That we try to follow each time.
And I don't know if it has to be in that order. It's just in general, these are the items that are going to be on your agenda.
Okay. All right. So it doesn't have to be that order. Then when we set the agenda. I guess we have already felt we had the freedom to make some changes, which we did. All right. That's good. That's a good understanding. Thank you.
I'm not sure if correspondence is relevant any longer. I think this was at a time before electronic communication. And every time somebody would handwrite a letter and mail it to city hall, we would give it to the city council. So. I would be for striking out correspondence because the council generally gets items. Uh, on a daily basis when it comes in. So I just don't know if it's relevant to have that on there any longer.
All right, councillors, your thoughts?
In the event we did receive something classified as a correspondence, what would be the avenue in which we would receive that? Or would we simply just notate that we have received a correspondence?
Well, if you think about it, anytime something comes in. I can scan it and I email it to you ahead of a council meeting. It sometimes people will submit comments, but it's related to an item on the agenda. So. You would get it at the council meeting, but it would go for that particular agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Riekel?
Yes, I actually, I have a question about, um, still on section or on item nine. Sorry, I didn't. Speak up. Um, just, I wanted some clarification on the fourth point. Where it's talking about vacations and it says during scheduled council recesses. Is that really necessary? Because we don't technically have. A recess in the sense of other, you know, as far as like other political bodies, we have our regularly scheduled meetings. So, I mean, we don't have a recess. Do we really need that in there?
I think we've typically not had a second meeting during the month of December. Uh, so that's sort of a recess. And, um. Since we've scheduled our meetings generally on the second Tuesday and possibly on the fourth Tuesday of each, each month. The days in between are in some sense a recess of the council. So that's how I would read that. If I were going to look on my calendar and try to schedule a vacation for myself. I would say, well, I don't want it to fall during the second or fourth Tuesdays of the month. Uh, but you're, you're correct. We don't declare. Uh, ourselves in recess the way, you know, the, the federal government does.
Correct. Okay.
Counselor Garland?
Well, um, Counselor Riekel, how about, uh, when possible to schedule vacations? Like we could say something like avoiding, uh. Regularly scheduled council meetings or something like that. I agree. I think it should be more concise or, or more specific. We don't have recesses. Why leave the word in there? Clean it up. We're here for.
That's a good point. We do, we do have meetings and we do schedule them, uh, on a, you know, a pretty routine basis. So, um. So schedule vacations to not coincide with scheduled council meetings.
Right. Around scheduled meetings or something of that.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll work out some language that gets us to that. Place. Okay. Uh, okay. Further on item D, the agenda.
This isn't the order, is it?
No, yeah, I think that's, that's what counselor, uh, uh, I mean administrator Betts said, it doesn't have to be this order. It, uh, but it generally will include these items in some order.
Okay. Cause remember before previously you would, we would have a subject or an agenda item. And then if somebody put a card in, they could speak on that agenda item and they.
Yes.
Stay or go. So, and then, and then if it's a public service like the bingo or something, they could do it right after the pledge of allegiance. But instead of have to wait to the, so I just didn't know if that's an order.
No, we've decided that's not.
All right.
I have a statement about that.
All right.
Well, I know this isn't the order. I completely understand that. Um. I think that we as a council should move, um, public comments back to the front. Um, and we need to make that decision, I think as a group. So was that this the appropriate time to do that?
I'll certainly take input on it. Uh, uh, Administrator Betts and I generally, you know, approve the agenda and work on it. Uh, and I want to do that on behalf of all of you and take, uh, your feelings on that issue into consideration. So, uh.
I know that I have sat through meetings previous to being a counselor and not been able to make public comment because I have family matters I have to deal with and. Picking up my adult child from work. And I know that since we've been in session that. We've had members of our community also have to leave, um, because of familial commitments. So I would like to move it to the front. So everybody has an opportunity to speak and not have to sit here for maybe three hours to do so.
Okay. Other thoughts?
I've been at meetings where ten people wanted to talk for three minutes. That's 30 minutes. And then how late do you carry the meeting number to get to our actual agenda items?
Yeah, that's, that's the other side of it. If, if, if it becomes, if there's a lot. Counselor Garland?
So. Um, I asked that same question actually a long time ago and said, why don't we just so that people don't have to sit through this long meeting? And it was brought to my attention by a about. Twelve year ago council member that the reason that they moved it to the end is that, that now mind you, this was on. Non-agenda items. This was just basic. Uh, people coming forward to state their business is that. Unfortunately, when people come into our meetings and they made statements that. Altered the overall vibe of the meeting. It set a precedence for the rest of the meeting or it set a feeling for the rest of the meeting. And, um, the council at the time felt that. By moving things to the end of the meeting. It didn't set that tone. Unfortunately. So I, and, and. I ha- I kind of came to agree with that after a while a little bit.
What can I?
But I would like to change public comments on topics, non-agenda items to city announcements.
And I've seen people come in that, that wanted to speak. And at the end of the meeting waited, you know, and said, oh, good. My answers, my questions got answered. But then in previous meetings. They came and asked a question and then during the council. The council wanted to address it and ask, so it, it sent it this way again. You know what I mean? So it's, it's really hard. It's a hard thing to, you know. You have them at the beginning or it's, that's why I sort of liked the idea for that little while, didn't you? Where we talked about an agenda item and then Tammy, was there anyone that, and she'd say, yeah, we have two people want to ask the question or speak about it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what we've moved to is that, uh, the people have requested to speak on an item that we are considering. And, and there's reference in our rules or in our charter elsewhere. That we have to hear the public comment that has, that has asked to engage on an issue before we vote on it as a council.
On the issue, right.
Uh, and so, uh, I think it's good to include that. That said, however, Chad, could you remind us though? What the difference is between our, our obligation to meet in public and our obligation to, uh, engage the public in our meetings? Because there is a difference there.
Yeah, absolutely. So generally speaking, Oregon's public meeting laws are public observation and not public participation laws. So except in very few circumstances where state law requires public participation. Those generally being things such as land use hearings or situations where you're going to impose or raise a fee. There's, there are those types of situations where state law requires that we take public comment. The short of those situations is up to the discretion of the council, whether and to what extent you want to take public comment and how and when to do that. I would note, you know, as you're having this discussion, if you flip a couple of pages, so it was on page four of your existing rules. Number four on that page talks about public comment and times in which you're required to take public comment under your current rules. So to the extent that you want to make amendments, that's probably where we'd be making changes to this. And then just conform that list that we've been talking about on page two to match whatever you decide on page four. If that makes sense.
Thank you. That's a good observation. Uh, I, I think rather than just. Changing or altering two or three words on this list. We might go a little more in depth on, on that more comprehensive, uh, look at the whole public comment issue.
And I also want to be mindful that Chad is on a three hour time zone difference than us. So, uh. I'm not sure how in detail do we want to get tonight, or maybe we set. A deadline for how long we want to talk about this tonight as well.
So, so Jackie, I, I appreciate that, but don't let that affect what the council is going to do tonight. I've pretty much been staying on West Coast time the entire time I'm here anyway. So I'll probably be up till two in the morning anyway. Take your time.
All right. Any other items on, uh, uh, page two, uh, two dash four on our agenda? Counselor Cook? Oh, uh, Counselor Roberts, go ahead.
I just want to know if we'd come to a, a agreed resolution on that. So I think we talked about it, but I don't think we agreed on anything.
I think based on, um, uh, attorney Jacobs comments, what I wanted to do was get to that other page on page four. And then if we decide, whatever we decide based on that, we could go back and look at this.
Revisit that discussion once we reach the, okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
I think the only thing, uh, uh, Administrator Betts had mentioned that correspondence is listed on the agenda. Um, and that seems to be an outdated. Item. So, uh, I think it would make sense to strike that from the general agenda.
All right. Uh, we've heard the comments and discussion on that. I'm, I'm seeing heads nod. So we'll, we'll remove correspondence. It's not to say that, uh, you know, correspondence might not be, wouldn't be brought in at some point. It just wouldn't necessarily need to be a, uh, an agenda item each time. Okay, let's look over to page two dash five. Council discussion and decorum. We have good rules on this and we even worked on them, uh, you know, in developing our team agreement back in, um. January, February, when, when we, when we got together. Uh, the issue with these kinds of rules is you have the rules. Do people follow them? And so, uh, do we need to change the rules or the language? So, uh, I'll begin hearing input from councillors on, on this aspect.
They all look good to me.
All right.
I think, uh. Uh, under section J, the last bullet point here, council members may set and adhere to time limits on discussions. I don't know if we need to be more specific here, but do we need to be more specific here about who sets the time limits and who enforces them? Is that set by the mayor? Is that set by? A majority vote that, you know, we vote to set a time limit. Um. Do we want to add specificity here?
So I'm happy to answer that initial question if you want, Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah. So generally speaking, unless the, the rules or city ordinance provides otherwise, the council has to take action as a body. So under the charter, the council will take action by basically a majority vote. So if the wanted to set a time limit here. That would be done by the council as a body as opposed to the mayor setting it. And this is just an overall time limit on discussions. Now the mayor as the, or the council president stepping in for the mayor. Has the ability to set time limits on public comment for a public hearing. So for example, if you have a large crowd, you know, the mayor may decrease the amount of time from three minutes to two minutes, for example, for public comment. But you know, we're talking about an overall limit for a particular item. That would be the decision of the councils of body to make.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification and that question. All right. Other item, let's flip over to page two dash six. This is the page that includes the section on public comment. Uh, so we could review it in a little more detail and see if it conforms to our understanding of what, uh, is currently taking place or ought to be taking place.
I have a correction on four A.
Okay.
It's just font. It's nothing big. The A is bolded and nothing else is bold.
Oh.
Sorry.
That's all right. So this makes a distinction of, uh, the different types of comment. Shall receive comments from the public at the time on the agenda for public comment on items not on the agenda. So this is where we can set just a general, um, what we used to call business from the audience or public participation. For non-agenda items and we put that on the agenda. And then as Chad mentioned just a minute ago, as required for any public hearing. So if we're doing a land use, uh, review. And public, uh, testimony is a requirement. We have to be sure that that's on the agenda. And then, uh, the rule that we have established for ourselves is before the council takes final action on any agenda item. And this is where Counselor, uh, Alexandra, you said, where we turn to Tammy and say, Tammy, is there anyone who was asked to speak on this agenda item? And then we hear that before we take our final vote. That allows, uh, you know, in, in a broader way than we are required to, that allows the public to participate. In our deliberative process.
And then our discussion on there. To react to them.
Correct. We do have, uh, a rule at the bottom, uh, item D. In general, council members will not respond to comments from the public except to ask clarifying questions. Any public requests for council action will be referred to staff for review before placing, being placed on a future agenda. And this is really coming out of that principle of we want to publicize our agenda in advance. Let people know what business matters will be decided and not have either a member of the public or a member of the council. Bring up an item that hasn't been previewed for the public and expect action on it, uh, that particular night. Counselor Garland, I see your hand up.
I, I do, and I, I don't have an answer. So I guess I'm just looking to everybody else. Um, because my only note here was should this be changed to include zoom people? So obviously I don't have an answer, but I don't know. Maybe somebody else could chime in that had a note.
You're talking about, uh, the participation of the public?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, um.
What do you say?
Yeah. To receive comments from the public is, is broad enough. Our understanding now is that those comments can come in in a variety of ways. So, um, sometimes they are either, uh, even, uh, letters that have been mailed to the council. Although I don't know if we have a specific rule about whether we will read, uh, letters, uh, but. Like now and then you'll see somebody say, you know, a member of the public has asked me to read this letter because they couldn't be here tonight. And we get things, uh, in that form as well. But I don't want us to specify the means by which people, uh, present their comments. Because we might do it in such a limited way that we would leave something out. So can we, uh, can it be our understanding that we believe this? To include all means by which people could, uh, per. So can we, can it be our understanding that we believe this to include all means by which people could participate in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. So having looked this over and and really not recommended any major changes in what's here, does this affect how we feel the list of the agenda items should be back on item D one?
I share Mindy's perspective that general business from the audience, public participation, whatever we choose to call it, should be at the end. I think that we have affirmed our commitment to our constituents that we would have the city announcements or what we choose to call that as well at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
And so I think we've affirmed our commitment there and we still allow, we gratuitously allow that as a council that we hear from them, but leaving it at the end makes the most sense in my.
All right. Well, I'm good to have that input from a variety of counselors and we Administrator Betts and I will continue to try to structure our agendas in that way. If it gets out of hand, you know, that's a different story, but for right now, you know, as as Counselor Garlington mentioned in the past, there were times when it did affect the meetings in such a way that it was felt there was a need to review that that policy. But for now, let's hope that things go continue to go well. Counselor Garlington, you add your hand up again.
I'm sorry, Charlie. My apologies.
I know, I know. There's that little remove hand or lower hand button too. We're all learning on this. No, no apology required. On the matter of motions, now we're getting to things that really kind of bring us back to Roberts Rules of Order and how we vote on matters. I Did anyone have anything on this that they had an issue with? I will call your attention. Oh, did you?
We can come back to it, but I did have one more thing on two six.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Motions as a whole. It was carryover, so I apologize if you would wish that was addressed with item E. But it was E L. If council member wishes to discuss a major policy issue, it will be scheduled on a future agenda and not raised during current agenda. I'd like to ask the clarifying question, what is a major policy and how do we define that? Say another counselor brought up an agenda item that no one was particularly interested in talking about, but it wasn't a major policy issue. Could that raise issues within a council that we would choose to move that forward even though it wasn't what isn't defined as a major policy issue?
In the past, we've had sometimes had guidance from the city attorney or the city administrator saying that sounds to me like a major policy issue that might be better, you know, referred to another meeting.
Okay.
And that guidance has been helpful, but I think as a council, we might also have a sense of that as well. It doesn't come up too often. We stick to the agenda around here, basically.
I didn't have any concerns specifically, but just with the language and the wording.
That's right, because, yeah. You use a term and, you know, like major policy issue, we don't have it defined somewhere, but we have to have a sense. We know it when we see it, I guess, is kind of the answer on that.
I hope that might be. It looks like Chad too.
And usually Chad knows it when he sees it. Chad, you want to speak up on that?
For those major policy issues.
Yeah, I think just for educational purposes, generally what we're looking at there is the public meetings laws typically want us to put items on the agenda to provide notice to the public about the major issues that are going to be discussed at the meeting. If there's a small minor issue that comes up where you guys need to take action that we wouldn't be really so concerned that the public didn't receive adequate notice, we wouldn't consider that a major policy decision. Anything about which, though, we feel that the public really should receive notice before the council takes action would be a situation where we would say you want to put that on a future agenda.
All right, thanks. So back on the issues of motions, Roberts Rules, I'd like to call your attention to one at the bottom, number nine, reconsideration. When a motion has been decided, any council member who voted with the majority may move for reconsideration. A motion for reconsideration may only be made at the meeting at which the motion on the ordinance resolution order or other decision was approved. So our rules require any reconsideration motion to be to be made at that same meeting. Some of you are familiar with another elected official body in this region recently where a member of that group decided to reconsider an item at a subsequent date. Apparently their rules are different, but our rules require us to do that at this date. So there have been, there was a matter earlier this year when the council took a vote and I voted on the side of the majority. And subsequent to the meeting, I thought, gee, I wonder if I can bring up, you know, let's reconsider this and go back to what I would have, you know, or tried to persuade the counselors to change their vote. And this rule prevented me from doing that. I think it's a good rule the way it is. I think there should be sort of a defined statute of limitations on whether you can reconsider. Although I have seen rules for other cities where you could do a motion for reconsideration at the next subsequent meeting, but not beyond that. Any feelings about how you'd like this? Do we want to keep it the way it is? Counsel or Attorney Jacobs, your hand is up again.
Yeah, so I just want to add one more point of clarification here is that under the way the the rules of order work is that a motion for reconsideration is really just to reconsider that exact same vote that just occurred. But it doesn't preclude the council from placing the same, basically the same item on a future agenda and taking another vote to amend the previous vote. So for example, to the extent you adopt an ordinance and then, you know, two months later, you feel like, hey, I don't think that ordinance was good, we should repeal it. You could have a future agenda item to repeal that ordinance. So it's it's a bit of semantics, but I just want to clarify for everyone is just because you take a vote on something, it doesn't mean that it can never be quote unquote reconsidered. You would just do it in a different mechanism as opposed to calling a motion for reconsideration. You would just have a new agenda item.
That's very helpful. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
Okay, go ahead.
So Attorney, I'd just like to know on four, so like what we're talking about right now on the reconsideration, like if you wanted to change your mind, you're, you know, go down the and four, is is that the same thing as wanting to table something and then we bring it up next time? Can you do that? You know, if you don't reconsider right then, can you table it? Or no?
No, so those are, yeah, so those are two different things. So basically a motion for reconsideration is you have an item, you make a motion, you take a vote on that. And then someone says, wait a minute, I think I've changed my mind. I want to have a motion to reconsider that past vote. A motion to table is basically when you want to say, you know, well, you don't want to decide this issue. We just want to table it and we can either table it to a future meeting or you can put it on the table permanently. And that basically just ends the sort of discussion about that particular agenda item or that particular topic for this for the particular meeting you're at. As I was just mentioning, just because you you can't reconsider something, it doesn't mean that you can't have a future agenda item that directly relates to the vote you just took. You can do that separately.
All right. Thank you.
So I think that, you know, most recently here, when we were making a decision on appointing someone to fill a vacancy, we did table that process at a point when we were undecided at one as a council. Or or when we decided we needed to take more time, maybe technically that wasn't a vote to table, I but it was a similar kind of process, just putting it off a little longer. Counselor Riechel, your hand is up.
I appreciate that you brought that up because, you know, this discussion has kind of reminded me that we were struggling as as how to break that tie that did happen during, you know, our appointment process. Is this the appropriate spot to put in instructions? Because I think we were all kind of at a loss, like, what do we do here? So I'm just wondering if we want verbiage in the council rules as to how we would address that. Or is this not the correct place to put that? Does that make sense?
The the council rules, council rules do say that in the case of a tie vote on a matter that's either an up or down vote, a tie vote is basically a defeated vote. You must have a majority. If we have a tie vote when we are choosing among candidates for a position or for a board or commission, something like that, no one has received a majority, therefore no one is appointed. And we've had some some rules in the council vacancy appointment section of our of our rules that say, you know, you continue to work at it or you 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 narrow your number of applicants down from three to just the top two vote getters. But there are a couple of different issues are involved there. You'd like to see something that talks about a means of resolving a tie by other than eventually reaching a majority vote? Is that what you're saying?
I think I think I may be speaking directly to our appointment process and how, you know, we were at a tie and had to take a break from it, move on to other things and come back. And, you know, we did need to make a decision, but I'm just curious, like, I understand that that's a very specific situation that we may not come across again, but what if we do? Do we, do we as a council, I'm not saying yay or nay, but do we as a group want to create some sort of direction for ourselves if we were to be in that position again, I guess, is what I'm asking.
All right, you've you've raised a good question, Counselor Garlington. Is your comment on the same kind of issue here?
I can comment on that, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I believe we have rules in our charter on appointments. Am I not clear on that?
I don't think we have a copy of the charter included in tonight's agenda. We did in an earlier one, so I can't point to the right.
Yeah, I don't have it with me either.
So I I do have the charter in front of me and there's there's language in here about filling vacancies in the process for that, but not any necessarily language that dictates what to do in the case of a tie. You know, I would point out that really the only situations where a tie is going to emerge, which can't be broken at a future meeting, you know, for example, if if one person is absent from a meeting, you could end up with a tie, but when that person comes back at the next meeting, they'll be able to break the tie. So the only situation where this arises is when you have a council vacancy. And certainly, you know, we can address that in various ways, but I will remind everyone that at your last meeting, what we talked about is due to the language in the charter related to proportional voting, that we are going to add language to that effect that will allow you to sort of use that rank choice voting process when you have multiple people to choose from. So that may assist. I don't think it'll resolve every situation, but it may assist in in avoiding that kind of situation in the future.
Okay, thank you for that reminder because, yeah, I had forgotten that part.
And Chad, I would just add that we could have a tie because of a council member recusing themselves from a vote for a conflict of interest or something like that. We could still end up with only six people voting and have some three, three ties. So but I I think, you know, understanding that we 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 might want to develop some kind of process and maybe that rank choice voting is the process that would be helpful. Counselor Garlington, I think you had another comment on another another issue you wanted to make.
I did. I just wanted to clarify on number seven in just trying to keep things as gender gender neutral as possible, which is where we went with our charter to begin with. And I thought on that last line, it could read either attorney if desired or attorney if necessary and take out the heat shade.
Yeah, part of the reason we amended our charter was to remove this kind of language and and I think we can, we can find a way to to word that better. Thank you. All right, we've been here since 5:30 at 7:15. Can we go for, you're willing to go for about another 15 minutes on this tonight? Again, we don't need to finish it all tonight. I'm I'm hearing some, seeing some heads nod, so, okay. All right. Yes.
I can go another 15 minutes, but can I take like two minutes first?
Sure, let's, we'll take, we'll take a brief break and I'm going to go get a drink of water myself because I've been talking too much. We'll take a five minute recess and we'll come back. We're back. Are we still on and recording? We were live during that or, okay, very good. All right, item number G, council member conduct. Comments on this one? Counselor Garlington, your hand is up. Is that?
That's okay.
That's okay. This is one of the difficult ones, I have to say, because sometimes we, by virtue of being on the council here, serve in other capacities as well. You know, we have a a member chairing a water council. We have members who are serving on other bodies as elected official representatives there. I'm part of a consortium of mayors speaking as mayors on issues of the region. And it is not practical for us to ask for a council vote on every matter that some of us serving in those kinds of capacities would want to, you know, on a matter that we might be asked to speak on. On the other hand, we can't in those capacities commit the city to some action that has not been formally approved by the city council. So I would just ask that we be understanding of the difficult tight rope that is to walk sometimes. Things come up. People ask for an opinion or a comment and I trust people to to kind of understand that limitation and and do their best to abide by this kind of a rule. We want to act as a body. And and that's how we should act and, you know, deliberate with one another on those matters. We do have rules about censure. Confidentiality. Are there comments on the remainder of page two, seven or page two, eight?
I have.
Mindy, Counselor Garlington.
So I I think that it's very necessary in H to move all of those down and number one be written very clearly about how a confidential email needs to be marked from our city attorney and or our city administrator rather than left it up to I just think it needs to be clarified. I've sat in that. I've been in the debacle and I think it obviously needs to be called out. And I don't think there's any harm in adding a line that says confidential email will be marked as such. And no question to anyone from our team about what it is or what should be done with it.
Chad, I'd like you to weigh in on this. What generally is the procedure? I don't know that since I've been mayor that we've received any communication from you that fell into this category. We may have, I just don't recall it. But what generally is the procedure that your office uses in conveying information which should be considered confidential under this rule?
So generally speaking, anytime that we are giving you legal advice in a situation that is not a public meeting, so it's in a quote unquote private setting, whether that's via email, a memorandum, or just a discussion, that that is going to be deemed attorney client privileged and we don't have the right to waive that privilege. Like council as a body does that. So you neither my office nor staff can sort of waive that privilege on behalf of the city. Generally, when there are situations where we think that there may be a public records request or we think that there may be any sort of confusion as to whether or not something's confidential, we'll put attorney client privilege communication on the document, but we don't necessarily do that with every single memo, even the or every single email, even though pretty much every email from our office would be deemed confidential unless the council, you know, waives that privilege. There are situations where if you're not seeking or receiving legal advice, that it would be covered by the attorney client privilege. So for example, an email just saying, Chad, are you available to attend this meeting is not going to be a privileged email. You know, certainly if you all want to give our office direction to put attorney client privileged communication on every email, we can do that. email, we can do that. You know, but just generally speaking, that's not a practice we follow just because it adds, you know, an extra 30 seconds to every email we do. Over the course of the day with hundreds of emails that, that time could add up. But, you know, if, if that's something the council desires us to do, we could certainly accommodate the city in that request.
All right, is that helpful information, Counselor Garland? I, I like your emphasizing the importance of this because you know, we do know that sometimes this happens and has happened. So you're muted.
It should be clear. I think it should be a statement and and, and it should be a rule. And when that rule is broken, there's somewhere to go back to and not a question about whether it was or whether it was not. And generally, generally speaking, when I see things that are marked confidential that I, I'm aware that they are. But there have been instances that things that were I thought confidential were not. So I would just, I think that if we had a precedence that that should be followed at that point. And leave nothing up to question because you leave things up to question and there's going to end up being a question.
All right, so from your experience then, your valued experience on this council, if there is a question of whether something is or isn't a confidential matter, we, we should ask the question and find out so that we don't assume a one way or the other and act in a matter that is, is not appropriate. Counselor Rieckel, you have your hand up. Is this on the same matter or something, one of these others on the same page?
It's on another matter, but I mean, which I can go back to when we're ready, but I I completely agree and support what Mindy is saying. I think that that should be clear.
Okay. Others? Counselor Coop?
I, I guess I just have a question. Who, who determines whether something's confidential or not? Is that the center? Is it the city? Is it the city attorney? I don't know.
Well, Chad has, has defined something that is confidential because of attorney client privilege. Other matters of confidentiality, what would be a broader definition of confidentiality, Chad, that, that might still come under this rule?
I guess if I'm thinking about the situation, I believe that Counselor Garland is referring to, I don't think it would fall under Chad's example of attorney client privilege. So if you know, members of council are communicating among themselves or we're getting an email from an outside source to the council, at what point and who is determining what is confidential or what is not?
Okay, that, that's, that clarifies a little more. Chad, would you care to respond to this too?
Sure, there, there's all kinds of communications that the council may receive that are confidential. They could be confidential, as I was explaining, because of the attorney client privilege, they could be confidential because they are subject to a non-disclosure agreement that we may have signed with like a developer, for example, they may include trade secrets. There's provisions to allow for confidential submissions under state law, you know, where someone's not required by law to submit something, but they want to submit it confidentially and we agree to keep it confidential. So there's all kinds of situations that could arise where something is deemed confidential. Whether and to what extent we can keep those documents confidential becomes a question under state law under the Public Records Act. And we have to analyze the specific records in that situation and the facts of that situation to figure out whether and to what extent an exemption under the Public Records Act applies. And the reason I raise that is because there's several provisions and exemptions under the Public Records Act related to confidentiality that are subject to a public interest balancing test. And that public interest balancing test is really determinative at the point in time that the request is being made. And so there's not a sort of umbrella catchall definition of what is confidential. It sort of changes on, you know, at any given point in time, depending on the facts and circumstances of that particular situation. You know, generally in those situations, as I mentioned, when, you know, it's not clear whether a document is confidential, we will try to give you a heads up. I know, you know, city administrator Bets and her staff would certainly do so and our office would certainly do so. You know, especially in situations where it's not dealing with the communication from our office where you presume confidentiality. You know, other documents that you may receive, you know, for example, from, you know, our, our previous presenter, if they, they provide information to the city related to security of the water system. You know, that would be a confidential document and we would be sure to let you know that that is a confidential document. I, I don't know if that's at all helpful. I feel like I rambled a little bit there, but I'm happy to answer questions. I, I'm just sorry, there's not a precise definition of what is confidential because under state law, it just changes depending on the circumstances.
Counselor Huckabee?
I think that it's H councillors and mayor needs to do their due diligence to make sure whether it is or it is not. We all know I like to keep the public apprised of what's going on at city government and I routinely ask city staff, is this confidential? Can I share? Is this confidential? Can I share? Because I'm not going to get myself in muddy waters, but I know I need to do that due diligence. And I was instructed that unless it says confidential, it is not confidential.
All right, that's helpful. Counselor Garland, do you, do you suggest any changes in the wording of these rules? Or are you speaking in terms of just wanting to emphasize this in our conversation tonight? As, as we noted earlier with the work sessions we've had, we are still kind of in a training mode as a council. And a reminder of these issues from council members who have experienced them firsthand in, in a, you know, in a situation that did not reflect well on the city, you know, that's a good reminder to us. It's a good training opportunity. So I appreciate you bringing it up. Do we want to make changes to the wording? Are we?
Well, I brought it up. Counselor Rieckel was in agreement with me. And I guess had nobody said anything else, are we, we're just leaving it up to unclear. Just leaving it up to what it is. Which is
Confidentiality under law have, have to be kept in complete confidence. It's a difference from, it's a different definition than Counsel Alexander and I having a conversation and him saying, keep this to yourself, but blah, blah, blah. You know, it's a respect for an individual's sense of something that they want to keep confidential versus business of the council. That, that falls under confidentiality, that, that falls under a definite, a legal definition of confidentiality.
Mayor, can I interject real quick? Like in, in reading this again right now, you know, number four in particular is referencing executive session. I and I'm kind of like trying to skim here and see if there's something else that is maybe referring to the communications that we get on a regular basis, like, you know, via, via email or other forms of communication that should be, perhaps we need to add a line here. Just to make it specific to electronic communication?
So if I could maybe interject? I think we could resolve this pretty easily. If you want to add a sentence to the end of number one, which is really dealing with keeping written materials confidential and just sort of providing some general direction that, you know, city, city staff and the city attorney shall endeavor to mark any confidential written materials as confidential to notify the council of the confidential nature. I mean, something to that effect, obviously with better language. Just to make sure that we are doing our best to make sure that we are notifying you when some, when a written material is confidential. I don't think that there's any harm with that, and I think that would resolve Counselor Garland's concerns. And certainly, you know, as long as it has that endeavor language where, you know, if we happen to miss something or staff doesn't put it on a particular document, that that doesn't automatically excuse it. So if you, if something's that clear on its face that it's otherwise confidential, and even though we didn't mark it confidential, you should still do your due diligence and ask staff or ask our office, you know, hey, this wasn't marked. Is it really not confidential? But, you know, in most situations, we will do our best, best endeavor to make sure that it's marked appropriately.
And I think by the same token, yeah, if, if I should ask, or if the counselor should agree to ask counselors individually to give input on some matter. And we feel that counselors would be more forthcoming in their input if they felt that their comments would be confidential. That would be a time when we would need to clarify whether they will be or won't be. Some matters like evaluation of personnel are meant to be done in an open manner. And the comments need to be shared. There is some reference later on in these rules about writing an evaluation and putting it in a sealed envelope, which, which sounds like, you know, sort of a, a secret process that we, that it's generally not consistent with the way we do most of our things. But I, I believe that's the kind of situation, Counselor Garland, that you're referring to, where maybe you would say something very candidly because you had an expectation that no one else except maybe one or two designated people would see it. And all of a sudden, if everyone in the public sees it, you feel that that trust was violated. And we made it, we, and we need to be clear in those kinds of situations whether what people say is going to be a matter of public record or not. And I don't know that we want to put that in our rules, but you have reminded us of the importance of that. You want to respond?
I just want to say thank you, yes. You know, I think it's, it's really important to understand the expectation. And I appreciate Counselor Jacobs coming up with that. That verbiage, I think whatever you come up with will work fine and, and it will alleviate that questionability.
Okay, and let me go back to Counselor Rieckel then. You had indicated there was a different matter that you wanted to make a comment on? Or did you want to finish the discussion on this one too?
I can finish my part of this portion of the discussion. I agree. I think that what Chad said would be completely amenable to me. I'm fine with adding it to number one and I appreciate the clarification. I know that we are all adults and should be as President Huckabee said, we should be using our own due diligence, but that reminder needs to be in there just in case. So anyway, just one thing that I just had a question about on, let's see. This would be on G two, the censure. We have the censure details and rules are in our charter. Is that correct? Like what constitutes a reason for censure, like more detail, or is this the only place that it's mentioned?
There are certain provisions in the charter related to, you know, situations, for example, one of vacancy occurs or things like that, but not necessarily for censure. The censure language is really related to violations of these council rules. Or, you know, otherwise, you know, violations of, you know, city or state laws that are applicable to governing bodies. So for example, you know, if a member of the council violated the state conflict of interest laws, in addition to any penalty that the state ethics commission may impose, the council as a body may decide that they want to censure that member of the council for violating the state ethics laws. You know, so to the extent there's language in the charter that's violated, you know, you could use that as a basis for censoring, but the rules really lay out the process for censoring. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, did you have any concern about the rules themselves as, as they are written here?
Not as they are written. I think that personally I need to kind of evaluate what censure really truly means.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's our one sort of, you know, means of, of publicly recommend, reprimanding a counselor for a violation. All right, I think we've reached a good point in this. We've got a few pages to go, but we can do more of these at a future session. Was, you had one more? Okay, I'll let you.
I just have a clarifying question.
Okay.
Confidentiality for Chad. Just because a counselor says they want to keep it confidential, that doesn't mean it's technically confidential under public records law. Correct?
Correct. And as, as the mayor pointed out, if you're looking at the language in number one and dealing with confidentiality, it's really talking about matters of confidentiality, confidentiality under law. So in the example that he gave with this conversation between members of council and someone says, keep this quiet, there's no legal obligation to do that. Certainly, there may be other reasons why you would do so. But unless something is required by law, that's really what we're dealing with in the rules. We're not dealing with other sort of, you know, private conversations.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Good point. Yeah, go ahead.
I did, so I guess I was just trying to make it as simple as I could right here. If it comes from Chad, it's always confidential. Right? I mean, wouldn't that be in the rule? And then, and then administrator Bets sent us something, because we get a lot, I don't know if you, we've gotten them so far this year, but Chief Smurber will send out ones too. And he's always got that blue. This is confidential. You know, have you seen that? When, when Chief Smurber sends them, so.
He, he may even say that. Not everything, every, everything that Chad says tonight is not confidential because he's sharing it in an open session. If this were an executive session and he were giving us legal advice, that would be a different thing. So you can't make that broad generalization. If it comes from an attorney, it's under, covered under attorney client privilege.
Emails to our iPads. If it comes up to city council from Chad, is, is it just consider it always confidential?
As he said, in, in most cases, you know, unless it's, I'm available for a meeting, that kind of innocuous thing. You, you probably have that, that line at the bottom of your email signature page, don't you? Or, or something similar, I think, but we, you see a lot.
Yeah, there's standard language, but we'll, we'll put it at the top of the email to try to notify you all in those situations, just to make it abundantly clear.
Very good. Okay, I, I think, I think we've reached a good stopping point for tonight. We have more time to work on this. We don't want to make staff have to do too much language. You know, composing this language between now and our next meeting. So think about other things that you might want to talk about and we'll do that. And is there a motion to? Actually, it's a work session, so I will just say we are adjourned at 7:40 PM. Thank you, everyone, for coming and sharing tonight.